All right. We're gonna get this meeting started, so if everybody please stand. All right. Legislative update. Yeah, call the roll call. Yep. Would help, yes. And we need a motion.
(inaudible).
Councilmember Schroeder, councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
Councilmember Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly.
Here.
Mayor McKay.
Here.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse councilmember Schroeder.
Second.
Okay. If you call the question, please.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor McKay.
Yes. Thank you. Awesome. Well, we'd like to welcome and... Say what?
What happened? Somebody must have been...
We'd like to welcome Senator Lorne Book and to come visit us and see us and share an update and how are the kids, by the way?
They're very cute, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for asking.
Awesome.
We were just dancing La Bamba before I got here. They were having tortellini, so I apologize for my appearance.
No problem. We're just glad you're here.
We're very glad... I'm very glad to be here and very, very glad that Representative Stark will be here in a little bit to join me. And we'll do a little bit of a legislative update, but first, I think we should start with the really big, wonderful, and exciting for Southwest Ranches. And so I have a little something for you.
Awesome.
I have a...
Wow.
Big check.
There you go.
On what?
Perfect.
$500,000.
That's great.
Fantastic.
That's amazing. Should we go to... Should we get on front and get a picture with that?
I think so. I think we better.
Yeah. Let's get down there and get a picture.
(inaudible).
Nothing else on the agenda tonight.
(inaudible).
Make a motion to enter to the restaurant.
(inaudible).
Everybody big smiles.
I've seen bigger smiles.
Bigger child.
That's the 750 smile.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna leave this right here.
You take iPhone pictures?
Yeah.
But I figured we should start with the big, exciting, wonderful things in the beginning. And this was a very... Something I was really proud and excited to bring home to Southwest Ranches, a $500,000 appropriation which will address flooding in the Green Meadows neighborhood of Southwest Ranches. And so I know that that has been a major issue, very, very big. And I do know and remember last year when we met some of the other issues that we're having in terms of making sure that we have a center here in very... In events where we have storms. And so we're still gonna work on that. We'll get there. The project, though, that this is for will remove floodwaters from roadways in the heavily traveled area, which serves as a cut through for traffic for the town of Davie, the city of Weston, and the city of Pembroke Pines. And it will provide critical drainage capacity for stormwater runoff, thereby reducing roadway flooding, which is very important to all of us here in Southwest Ranches. And so I'm really excited about that. And in terms of a legislative update, I don't know how long or short you want me to go here, but it was a very, very busy legislative session. We started session with issues relating to sexual harassment and some of the issues that women face in our state. But on about February 14th, things shifted and we started to address the issues that came about from the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Valentine's Day shooting at the school. And so with that, we worked to put together Senate Bill 7026, which is a school safety bill. The bill does several things. I'm gonna go through some of them and talk a little bit about briefly, because I know you have a long agenda, how important I think that this piece of legislation is. On Valentine's Day, I was in the middle of finishing my subcommittee on the environment and just put together this wonderful budget with this appropriation. Couldn't have been more proud of myself. And looked at my phone and had an alert from Channel 10 that there was a shooting back home. Little did I know how close to home that would hit. And as soon as I got into my office, I turned on CNN and started watching some of the things that were going on. And so I quickly ran to Senator Rader's office, who represents Parkland, and called Representative Moskowitz and Representative Jacobs, started talking about a plan and how we could work to respond to the needs of our community. So we all got on a plane as quickly as we could and worked to make sure that we could learn as much as we could and make sure that these lives were not lost in vain. And so the next day, I brought senate leadership with me, our senate president and the two senate presidents after that, to work to make sure that we could put together something comprehensive that represented the needs of our community. When we got onto the ground, the first thing that those families said that they needed, that they wanted, was for those kids never to have to go back into that school building. And so one of the things that 7026, which is the school safety bill, does is it appropriates $25 million to tear down that building. It also works to make sure that there will be $1 million so that we can build a memorial on that site. The next thing that came to light was when we were speaking with our sheriff, that law enforcement had no ability to go after an individual who said they were going to shoot up a school. That even if they made that type of a threat, there was nothing that law enforcement could do. 7026 addresses that. It also ensures that if an individual is Baker acted, that law enforcement can seize their weapons and if they... And they can't purchase weapons. Another really important piece of this bill that I think is very important is a mandatory three-day waiting period to purchase a weapon. It bans bump stocks for the sale and possession of bump stocks, and it raises the age that a person can purchase a firearm from 18 to 21. I think that this bill was not a perfect bill. This is a bill that was a compromised piece of legislation, but I do believe that it moved the needle forward. One of the more controversial pieces of this legislation was the Guardian program. And I'm, you know, very proud to say that Broward County has already addressed the issues of our community and made sure that the Guardian program is not something that will happen here in Broward County. But I think that we are now also within 7026, and this has been a busy week. We established the Commission on School Safety. And our first meeting was this week, and we will have several meetings, and we will be presenting a complete look at the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas massacre, the things that happened there, other school shootings, and how we can prevent mass violence. And so I know that you have a lot of other things on the agenda, so what I will also do is talk a little bit about how our priorities shifted. After Valentine's Day, we had to work to shift a little bit of our state budget because we were re-appropriating funds. The legislation in 7026 appropriates $400 million to different areas within the budget. Thirty-seven... I'm sorry, $370 million for the Department of Education, 28.1 for the Department of Children and Families, and $1 million for the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. But I'm still proud to say that with those shifts in priorities, I worked to make sure that Southwest Ranches had their... Some of their priorities met. I know that we didn't get all of our drainage projects, but we're going to work very hard to make sure that those things happen going forward. And I want to thank all of you for coming up to Tallahassee at different points in time and having an opportunity to talk to you throughout the legislative session. Your community is so well represented and each and every one of you, and I'm just so very glad to have been able to bring something home to Southwest Ranches and will continue to bring the rest of those home. And so I'm just really excited to see you, and if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Why, have your...
Questions anyway?
No, but thank you very much.
Yeah, greatly, greatly appreciated. Thank you. Absolutely. I'll see she gets it. I don't know. Whenever Richard comes in, we'll let him just kinda jump in place, so whenever he shows up. So, public comment in the meantime? Do we have any public comment?
We have one speaker, Mayor. David Kozinski. You wave? Okay. We have no speakers, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Board reports. Any board reports? Go right ahead.
Noel Hollingsworth, Chair of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board. Just wanted... It's an announcement, an ad, that the boards are going to meet together. The Drainage and Infrastructure Board and the Comprehensive Plan Board are going to meet the night of the Drainage Board meeting, which is... What date is that again?
Wednesday night. This coming Wednesday night.
This coming Wednesday night. So, everyone come out that is interested in the nurseries, and that is exactly what we're going to be talking about, all of the concerns and possible solutions for the nurseries that are within our town and the problems that they are creating or appearing to create, and also to protect our rural lifestyle within our town. So come on out and give everyone an earful, and we'll work on it and bring something back to the council, both boards working together. And it's a pretty heavyweight group. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional board reports?
Mayor?
Yes.
We can go back to public comments. We had one speaker that I didn't have the card for, but John Esben requests to speak.
Sure.
You're gonna wave as well? Okay.
Okay. All right. Councilmember comments. Steve? Go ahead.
Sure. Actually, I just had the one same announcement. I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware on May 2nd, that's this coming Wednesday night. You know, this is a big deal. This is kind of our opportunity to really hear back from the residents, from the issues that they are hearing, and also hear back from the nurseries. This is... If we do this well, it's gonna be because it's a balanced view from both sides and looking for that middle ground that protects the neighborhoods and protects the residents of our town, but also is something that makes sense for the nurseries as well. So that's what we're looking for, is a lot of feedback from both sides. The more feedback we get and the more balanced it is, the better it'll be. But we know that there's real issues now. We know that changes need to be made, and this is our opportunity to do that, and it's an opportunity for the residents to be heard. So I strongly encourage you to come out and so that you can voice your concerns and also voice maybe some recommendations that you have. And I think it's gonna be an important meeting for our town going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Freddie?
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank everybody for coming. Thank you, Senator, very much. A few things, and then I wanna get into a serious topic. The... Just a couple of announcements. The town's got hazmat at Waste Pro on 173-50, Pines Boulevard, the 12th, from 8:00 to 2:00 PM. There's a non-shredding event, so I wanna make sure everybody understands that. It's at their facility. It's right down there off of 172nd. And we have bingo at the barn, put on by the Parks Foundation, 519, dinners included. I think the... I believe the ticket's $20. It includes a bingo card, and it's from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Last time, we sold out 120 spots, and we had a lot of fun. It was quite enjoyable, and it was a big raffle going on, and the kids had a great time with it. And this question came up at the last meeting, and I just wanna solidify it, make sure everybody understands that we've got elections coming up, and the qualifying begins in June, and I am definitely running for District 2, rerunning, so I wanna make sure that everybody understands that and publicly announce that. So... And I've got the paperwork, and we'll be filling it out shortly. Now, I'd like to get into something a little bit more serious, and I'm gonna be reading a little bit from my notes here, so please bear with me. At our last meeting, when the meeting had just finished, a resident who was very adamant that we not use CAP government spoke to me and was extremely upset to the point where I asked him to calm down. Immediately after letting me know his displeasure with the council's decision, he very vocally accused myself and the rest of the council of being blackmailed and extorted by CAP government. I feel I need to address this outburst, even if it was a knee-jerk reaction to a decision that he disagreed with. First, a little bit of history about this topic. Our town building services contract was being brought forward, and we had a professional panel of experts in the fields rate the companies that responded. The panel's recommendation and the highest scores was one of the... The one the council voted unanimously for. The panel was made up of experts who volunteered their time and expertise and had no vested interest in the outcome. Their approach to rating the companies was simply based on merit and ability. The council had no contact nor was present during these interviews. The residents who spoke at the last meeting stated that the reinspection fees were excessive and out of line, and our current provider, who also is the one that scored the highest grade on the new contract, were doing a bad job. This makes for great soundbites on YouTube, but falls far short of the facts. The procurement process that the town has adopted is fair and designed to prevent collusion, nepotism, favoritism, improprieties, and any sort of monkey business. We had enough of that nonsense when we formed the town 20 years ago. We will not reduce the requirements of this process to accommodate the preference of a few chosen people. Unfortunately, some of the residents' objections to the requirements of the town mandated that they had some issues with it and didn't disclose that they had a personal interest in the outcome. Here's some inspection facts. The year of 2017, we had a total of 6,023 inspections, roughly 25 a day. Of that, 401 failed. That's 6.7%. Of that, 96 inspections were failed with a fee. That's less than 2%. It's 1.5%. In the current year-to-date, we have 1,959 inspections. 109 failed. That's 5.6%. And 51 inspections were failed with a fee, and that's 2.6%. So it's within the statistical norm of what the previous year was. The facts indicate that the comments and allegations regarding abuse of this inspection system does not hold water, and the residents making these comments are misinformed and 100% incorrect. The bottom line is, the council came to the correct decision last meeting because the system in place works, and that's what we went by. And I just wanna clarify that for the record. Hopefully, I'll get an apology somewhere down the line on this, but, you know, I'm not gonna hold my breath. That's all I have for right now.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. I've got a couple of things. I don't know how many of you made it out to the barbecue out at the park for Country Estates, but I went out there. I hadn't been out there since the grass had kinda somewhat grown in, but I would tell you, I wasn't too pleased. That's not a ball field at all. That's a rock pit. I mean, that's stabilized parking. So we need to do something about it. I mean, we spent a bunch of money, and we have no ball fields to play on. I wouldn't tell anybody to go out there and play ball. I mean, you're either gonna trip and break your ankle, or fall and skin your knee or your elbows, or damage yourself. So I would like the council... I asked Andy to get me some numbers. He's gonna get them for me as far as to fix what we have out there now. I mean, we spent all that money. We have all that stuff. We've got a field, but it's a rock field. And I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I'm looking for your input here on what we should do and what your opinion is, so...
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to jump in on that. I think you're absolutely right that those fields, the way they are today, are not really suitable for or safe for most active sports. There is some grass on them, but it's so thin and so sparse that it's really not. I will say this, that I think, obviously, what we did was good, and it was right, and that we didn't throw any money away there. We just need to take the next step.
Right.
You know? We just need to take the next step and get some good...
We need some good fill on top and seed it. I mean, so it doesn't go away. I mean, I don't know what we do.
And of course, our challenge is gonna be to find the money to do that, because we have an extremely tight budget. So that's gonna be the challenge. The goal, I agree with 100%, finding the funds to do it is gonna be the challenge.
I will not be hesitating asking the Astronaut Parks Foundation. Freddie, go right ahead.
Well, I think before we spend a lot of money out there, let's see how much interest we gonna get, you know? Because that's gonna be a big thing. If we don't have the kids or somebody to organize those kids and everything, I can't see putting a lot of money in until we can get some commitments.
Commitments as far as the usage? Commitments as far as usage of the fields?
Well, if we're talking about spending money to fix a field, no. That's good. It needs to be done. But I think we need to put out some feelers and see, like, you know, they have all different places. They have quarry leagues. They have all kinda stuff for these kids. But it takes people to do that.
Yeah, but well, I guess what we were stating was, the condition of the field right now, nobody would even wanna come play on it. It just has way too many rocks. It's all pebbles. Go ahead.
It's a pretty rocky surface, but I really think we need another basketball hoop over there.
Yeah.
Every time I stop by, every time I try to stop by, it's in use. Sorry, guys.
You have to wait in line now?
Yeah. Sorry, guys.
Listen, I don't have a problem with adding that. Back when I was growing up, we had tether balls. You know, I think most of you guys probably remember tether balls, but...
But I'd like to see the numbers on something like that first, and there's probably more turf augmentation and ways that you can develop that area than we probably even, you know, could consider in a day. We don't... We're not experts on it, but I'd like to hear... I'd like to hear a little more about it.
I'm gonna ask Andy to jump in, 'cause he does have some numbers on this.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Rod Lay, the town engineer, did some rough calculations, so obviously, these are approximates, but just to give you an idea of what the cost might be. And what Rod looked at was two inches or three inches of fill, allowing a shrinkage factor of 20%. And we're talking about about 107,000 square feet is what we're talking about. So two inches of fill would be about $26,000. The extra inch of fill to go to three inches is about $32,000. So just to give you an idea of what the cost would be to...
I would think you'd need at least three inches. But then again, is there something we can do, like drag that field or something? Gay... I'm gonna ask Gay to come up, 'cause she went out there with me, and we wrote it. So Gay, would you come up and pitch in here, please?
Well, yeah, it is a rock pit, and it's gonna keep coming, no matter what you do. I made a suggestion. I talked to the engineer. There is the netting that they use for nurseries and stuff. Guy over here is putting it down. You can lay a netting of that nature down. We did it at Miami International Airport. And you can even staple it and then put the dirt on top. Or the only reason you would staple it on the ends is to keep it from rolling. And then put the dirt on top and then seed it. And I don't think the... It will keep the pebbles, 'cause it's anywhere from this size down to a pebble. It'll keep it from going through. And then the grass will grow, and it should make very good footing without that. I suggested I would do a test pattern for them. I'd take one area that's really bad, put the netting down, pin it, put the dirt on top of it, and then seed it and just let it be. Even if it takes three or four months, it doesn't matter. And then you can see after the rains come, because that looked really good, I have to tell you. And then after the rains and all the rain we had through the summer and so on, this is what you have, because they... It goes down, and then the rocks start coming up. The gentlemen on Hancock, they did the same thing, and it looked really nice. It looked like powder. It's had rain on it for a while, and now the rocks are starting to show on it. And it's not a matter of getting out there and raking them, because you'll be raking till you're 100 years old. So I think that might be a really cheap way to go and know that those rocks aren't gonna come back up through there.
All right. We're gonna look at our options.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gay. Appreciate it.
Yeah, there's a lot of free fill out there.
Clean fill?
Yes. Yeah, well, let's put it this way. You can make sure you only take clean fill, and I'll volunteer to do that, if you wanna do it, 'cause I did it before for some other things. But these people dig these swim pools, and most of them are dug in sand and stuff. They're not too rocky. We oughta look at that, see, you know?
Well, we have a gentleman that may be doing this fill deal with us on the site that we might be able to get some clean fill from or whatever, but we're wasting our time if we don't put good, clean fill down. I mean, we're not, you know... We're lighting money on fire if we don't do it right.
Oh, yeah. I agree, but I say is, we could talk to these people and say, hey, we want rock fill.
All right. Learn what you can and bring it back to us next meeting.
All right.
All right? Would appreciate it. All right. Legal comments. Keith, you're up to bat.
Where's Keith at?
Down below.
I'm sorry. I joined co-council. For everyone who knows, Gary Resnick's here tonight. He is our outside counsel for telecom issues, one of the foremost experts in the state, and he'll be presenting an item later tonight on behalf of the town. As for legal issues, Mayor, we've met with Correction Corporation of America's council this week. We are solid as a united front going forward, and that will start transitioning to their lead very shortly in that case. In other legal matters...
Fire truck.
Well, I'm gonna get there in a second. The two other things is, I decided to take one for the team, and we got subpoenaed, a very lengthy subpoena by Bergeron, Sun Bergeron, that group, the waste group, got a subpoena the other day, 76-page subpoena, and Andy graciously allowed me to take it, so I'll be representing the town.
Thank you, Keith.
Yeah. I'll be representing the town in that deposition as a 30B6 witness. As for the fire truck, we sent them a final demand letter. We got a response... Andy, I believe it was yesterday?
Yes, yes.
Yesterday? And Andy is working with the chief on a formal response, because like everything else, their response implied like we weren't doing what we were supposed to do, and Andy's responding. If nothing occurs through this final ditch effort, I will propose to you in May a resolution to just file the case against them for damages for the lemon of a fire truck and let you all make a decision at that time. Other than that, there's no further legal issues.
I'm ready to tell you to go ahead as soon as you're ready to go. I don't know about my colleagues up here, but this has been dragging on way too long.
We just need a resolution pursuant to charter, just to document that, Mayor.
Okay. Well, if you'll bring that for the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Yeah, just to finish on that, Mayor.
Yep.
Their response to us was basically indicated that they've told us that there are issues that can be taken care of, and we've been negligent in taking care of those issues. And I know that that is not the case, that the chief and fire administration has worked very hard with the local suppliers or vendors to get those issues addressed without success. So what I've asked the chief Bennett to put together is that listing, that documentation of each and every time they've contacted the different players to get that work done that hasn't... That they haven't responded favorably to. So I understand your frustration with it and wanting to move it forward, and I'm not disagreeing with you, but I will tell you, as part of the legal process, as Keith goes into it, they're gonna say, well, they offered this to try to correct it. What did you do? So these are steps we need to go through as part of that. It very likely will not change the outcome of where we're headed, but for our own defense or for our own argument, we're really compelled to follow through on this, and that's what we're doing.
Okay. You're up next, anyway.
Yeah. Just a couple other things, Mayor. I just wanna let everybody know that we've had a coyote sighting out west between 188 and 196, and that any residents that see that are urged not to shoot the animal, if between 188 and 196, and that any residents that, that see that are urged not to shoot the animal, if avoidable, but to call the South Florida Office of the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission at 561-625-5122. Once again, if there's a coyote sighting, to report it to 561-625-5122. I wanted to give you all an update on the fire modular, and let you know that the RVs and the storage containers were delivered yesterday. The movers are scheduled next week, and site work is anticipated to begin the week of May 7th. So we are, we are moving forward with that. We're excited about that. As you certainly go by that site, you'll, you'll see that activity. And last but not least, I just wanted to remind you all that on Saturday, May 12th, at the Davie Town Hall is the 44th Annual Pioneer Day, where the town's pioneer being recognized for this year is Noel Hollingsworth, will be recognized at that event countywide. So you're certainly all invited to attend that event and support Mr. Hollingsworth. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, ordinance, number nine, first reading.
This is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, vacating, closing, and abandoning a portion of unimproved right-of-way recorded as the west 20 feet of tracks 13 through 16, less the south 40 feet of track 16, Everglades Sugar and Land Company subdivision of Section 34, Township 50 South, Range 40 East, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 1, Page 152 of the Public Records of Dade County, Florida, generally located at the 13800 block of Sterling Road, midway between Hancock Road and Holatay Trail, and extending 1,280.75 feet north of Sterling Road, authorizing the preparation and execution of effectuating documents, providing instructions to the town clerk, providing for recordation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Is the applicant here? You state your name for the record, and maybe explain to the council a little bit reason for your request.
Theodore David. David and Gerch are surveyors. My address, 12075 Northwest 40th Street, Coral Springs, Florida.
Go ahead. I'm waving behind you.
Oh, that's, I'm here representing the petitioner.
Can you please explain the request a little bit?
There's a 40-foot right-of-way that was in the original plat, or the Everglades Farm plat. The right-of-way has never been used. It goes through quite a bit of property. The fence on our property right now is actually on the middle of the right-of-way. Where 20 feet is on our property, 20 feet is on the adjoining property. It serves no purpose to the public at this time, so we'd like to have it abandoned properly, so we can incorporate it into our own property.
Thank you. Jeff, do you have anything to add?
Just a couple of things, counsel. You vacated the 300-foot segment at Palomino Drive, at the intersection of East Palomino and this right-of-way, roughly 10 years ago. And this is, this is on the opposite end. The right-of-way extends from Sterling north to East Palomino. Almost all the residents that bought that property fenced it in, have plantings on it. Broward County had approved some homes prior to the town's incorporation with tennis courts and other things, pretty much right up to it. Maybe they granted variances and took into account this right-of-way, I'm not sure. Some, some properties along the, along this segment did dedicate some additional right-of-way as required by Broward County when they pulled building permits, but for the most part, it's 40 feet for most of its length. We have not seen any evidence that anybody uses, needs, or uses this right-of-way for any access or any other purpose, other than just to enjoy it as part of an extension of their property. The utility companies have all submitted letters of no objection, including the Drainage District, to vacating this segment. The applicant had attempted to get neighboring property owners to sign in on the petition, as we always ask that they do. That was not, that did not happen in terms of the consent of those neighbors. However, we have found that, that people often will not sign on to these things for any number of reasons, and yet don't object to the actual application. In an abundance of caution, we noticed every single property owner between Sterling, East Palomino, Hancock, and Holatay. And we did this over three weeks ago, to give everybody a lot of time to respond. We, we've only heard one response. I understand Andy's gotten a few inquiries from a few other people about possibly going through the same process to vacate it, and that, that sums my analysis.
Jeff, this is just their 20 feet, not the whole 40 feet?
This is just their 20 feet on a quarter-mile segment from Sterling north. So the 20 feet on the other side of the...
So if the other people want the other 20 feet, they ought to come in and do the same thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Just a quick question, or I guess a confirmation. My, my question with this was to make sure that there were no horse trails or future trails like that that were planned for this space. My, I was, received information there was not. Can you confirm that, or is that... I don't know if you're the right one to even direct that to, but I want to make sure that that's, that's not the case.
To the best of my knowledge, there was not. But I can't say with, I can't say definitively that, that there hasn't been any consideration by one of the boards that might oversee that.
Okay.
Steve, I'm familiar with this piece of property.
Yeah.
And actually, it's all on the man's property, the right-of-way. It doesn't, and it's only, actually, there's a private road that he uses. That's, that's what it is, and it's gonna take off part of it. I talked to the engineers about this, because a guy's a personal friend of mine, he asked me to go out there and look at it with him. And that's what he actually wants to do, is just wear that 40-foot right-of-way, keep the 20-foot right-of-way. But from talking to him, he may know more about it than I do, but Mike's a good friend of mine, by the way. And he would be able, imagine what you want to gain there, is give you more property that you can build on. Am I not right there?
Right now, we have no plans to build on that portion of the property. It will give us a larger setback, which we actually do not need for the house we plan on building. It's just basically going through the legal action of our fence not actually becoming our property, where the fence is now.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if you get this additional right-of-way...
Yes.
In other words, you, you need X amount of feet to build, property to build on. It's just gonna give you more, like, you can increase his building.
Move your set. Yes, it could, yes, yes.
Yeah, I think that's what, what is happening.
All right, Mayor, you need a motion, then I'm gonna turn it over to you to open up to public.
I'm making a motion.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. I'm gonna open up the public. Get, have a seat for a minute.
Bill Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. When I saw the agenda, this is the very first time I ever heard about that easement over there. I made a couple of phone calls to the president of Sunshine Ranches and to the chair of the Parks Board. Neither one had ever heard of it before. So definitely, the town did not do due diligence in asking individuals and groups that may have a stakeholder in it to do something. With discussion with Gay Chapels, we have been, the Parks Board has been looking for interior trails within the town. And here we have a road easement that is not used, and the 20 feet we need for a trail. Well, from what I understand, after speaking with Gay this afternoon, that it goes all the way, at least 20 feet. But the problem is that when the two properties say, which are kitty-cornered each other, the property lines come together like this, and you can't get from this one, which would be on the east side, to the one that would be on the west side. So what I'm suggesting is that a 45-degree angle be put on the northern section of their east-west line, north-south line, where they come together. So the 20-foot can transition if the Parks Board decides to put a trail there. And Gay is going to bring this up for the very first time they've ever heard of it at the next Parks Board meeting, with this just to be turned over to the Comp Plan Board to be put on the trail map as a future trail. May I continue for a minute?
Quick.
Okay, so it defective of the town not to go to the stakeholders. They just sent out the letters to go to the Parks Board or the Infrastructure Board and the homeowners, Active Homeowners Association of that area in the future. Behooves the town to do that. Now, this, the one thing that really caught my eye about this whole thing was this was planted in 1912. That is incredible. That is the very beginning of Sunshine Ranches, when they sold swampland in Florida. We were the swampland they were selling. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's so much better now after it rains.
Obviously, he kind of like said everything. So the bottom line is, I really don't care if this gentleman gets this piece, because there's another 20. We don't, we're not gonna put a road in there, but we know how we're fighting for trails or multipurpose. I don't want to say trails, because if we never have any more horses left, people are still walking. We don't have sidewalks, but if they can walk in safe areas. And this was my other bone of contention, that we don't know where all of these right-of-ways or easements, or whatever you want to call them are. We haven't a clue. And unless we're told, we can't put them on our trail list.
We need to get them on that map, that GIs.
That's what I said the last time we were here, that that's something that we need to put on there, so that we know. We almost, I don't know if you ever cleaned that up on Sterling Road, but they allowed that man to go all the way, not, not give up his 20 or 30, what was it?
Oh, no, he had to give up.
50 feet.
He had to give up 50 feet.
50 feet, but it almost slipped through the cracks.
It almost did.
And that is a trail that's already planned, and it almost got away. So I looked at it with Andy this afternoon, and it goes from Sterling all the way to East Palomino. But it goes from 20 feet, because we gave some away. So you have 20 feet, then it kind of jumps over, you have another, you know, one given away for 20, and then it... I said, well, it kind of makes the trail do this. That's kind of nice. But then he made me aware of the fact that you can't, you have to have kind of like a cul-de-sac there, so that you can make that connection, if it, if they're not in line with one another. So I would like it to be sent to us on any time that something like this comes up, that we can take a look at and see if it's worth addressing. Remember, Sterling Road is very dangerous, and if we can get those people off of that road, and, and they can go somewhere else safely and walk or ride, it's to our benefit and their benefit. And there is some out west that I did locate that are gonna be good for us out west.
You gotta wrap it up there.
But anyway, that's pretty much wrapped up. We'd like to see it and protect it.
Good evening, counsel. David Kazenski, 6411 Holatay Trail. Just limiting my comments, that I think that we should preserve part of this trail, this easement for a horse trail. Horses are what we're based town on. It preserves our rural nature. Thank you.
Seeing no additional public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to us. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, a couple of comments. First, I want to go back in history just a little bit. There was a time when, not the town per se, but the Drainage District. It seemed like whenever you went in for any kind of work, we were always grabbing easements and grabbing, grabbing this stuff. And it was, it was like a land grab there for a while. We fought back on that, so that that no longer occurs, and if there's no use for an easement, we always... It goes right to the, to the resident. It's their property, and I think that's good. What I'm concerned about, from what I'm hearing, is if we send every one of these items to the boards to say, hey, do you think that someday you may once, there may someday be a need for this, I'm afraid we're gonna go back into the old mode of grabbing...
Good point.
You know, easements that we might need someday. Here's what I think we need to do. I think we need to lay out what the trails are. We, it has, it's not out there yet, and that's a real problem. Because what we should have is, we should have a plan for where these trails are. We should have a plan for how you safely ride a horse from Sunshine Ranches to Country Estates. We can't do it today. That's exactly right, but we need to be able to do it. Let me, let me, let me finish, okay? So that, that, that's a task that needs to be done in this town, and it needs to be done, I think, by the Parks Board. I don't want to, I don't want to throw it out there, but, but I will, because I think that needs to be done. You know, things like getting across Sterling Road, getting across I-75 on Sterling Road. That can be done, but it's gonna take work. It's gonna have to, we're gonna have to do the groundwork for it. We're gonna have to lay it out there. We're gonna have to do all the things and show how it fits into a master plan to get it done. Properties like this, we should be able to pick up that plan and say, yes, it's in, you know, no, we're not gonna give you that easement, because it's part of the plan, or yes, you know, you can have it, because it's not part of the plan. And we can't do that today, and I think that should be a priority for this town. That's what we're built around. That's what we were, that's what we were born to be, and, and I think that should become a priority of what we do, so that we don't have to send every easement to the board. I don't, I don't think that's the way to do it. I think what we have to do is lay out what the plan is gonna be, so that we can immediately look, and then we can forward that to Jeff and Milgram Associates, so that they can, they can do that as part of their review. They can know where those trails are, and they can say, yes, we're in the clear on this one, or no, this one's not. This one's an issue. So I, I, you know...
Moving forward, you gotta fix it.
I, I think we gotta fix it, and I would say it starts with the Parks Board, but I would, you know, open that up. Maybe there's a better place. Maybe it's the Comp Plan Board. I don't know where it would be. But, but I think it's, it should be a priority, because this stuff is just gonna get more and more difficult to, to get a hold of as time goes on. I will say that I would support that, kind of that transition area, that 45-degree to go from one 20-foot easement to the other, so you can transition across there. I would support that. But aside from that, I think it's their property. They should have it.
Freddie?
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with, because the man that owned it was a personal friend of mine. Actually, something that did come up, that whole, that property's completely surrounded by a private fence. It was not something that's open to the public whatsoever, no matter what we do. I think that, that should be part of it, I think. And, but actually, I, I don't know. I, I could ask him. But to me, looking at it, the only reason somebody would do this would be to gain some property for a reason. And I'm just assuming that maybe that, you could tell me if I'm wrong, that must be what, what is behind this. But, and I don't have any objections to it, but I think that the people out there should know what we're doing. And, but I don't see, personally, I don't see, have any problem against it. Fact is, I'll make a motion to approve it. But I think that it's not explained here well enough. I don't know. Maybe I'm not making myself clear of it, but because I know the person, I know the property, and I see, I see no problems with passing this, because if it was an outside area where we had a chance of going through this, but it's a north-south, it's not an east-west, which is part of our plan. So I think all that should be part of it.
And I agree with you. I mean, I think we should approve it.
All right.
Jump in for a second.
Go ahead, sir.
Two points. One is, I remember seeing a trail map, and I remember seeing it years ago.
Yeah.
But I, but I know there's one that exists out there that shows all the trails and the future trails that are not yet put in place. Don't ask me where it's at, okay?
Well, I'd love to see it. I would, anybody...
But I do remember, I do remember. The whole town was mapped out.
I would love to see it.
And, you know, maybe Gay remembers about, because we had some heated discussions, I think, on some portions of it at some point. But that was one point I just wanted to make, and maybe, and it's probably in the archives.
You're up anyway.
Somebody can locate, huh?
You're up anyway. You're next, because Freddie was done.
Oh, okay. And, and the other point I wanted to make is, this, Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, this requires two readings?
Yeah.
So we have another, we have another shot at it. I would support this at this point, as, as it's written, with the, and understanding that we've got another meeting to hash it out, if there's a, something glaring that we need to deal with. we need to deal with.
Okay, right. And Keith, if, when, on the second reading, we can adjust it for that, that transition piece, or should that be done now?
No, I'm going to, may, Councilmember Bright Cruz, I'm going to have the applicant, as long, if they're going to consent to that, I'm going to have them revise their sketch and survey accordingly because we want the legal description and the sketch to be reflective of what you're asking.
Okay.
Okay, let me ask you, Jeff, while we've got you. The right-of-way from Sterling to East Palomino is a 40-foot right-of-way. Do we, aside from the east side, do we have the entire west side? So, if we cut that right-of-way in half, 20 feet on each side, do we have the entire west side intact?
You have almost the entire west side intact. I think that you have, let me take a look at this. There's one property, probably about 300, probably a 330-foot wide property where you don't have the west side.
Okay, where does that fall related to?
Does that cut it off?
That's about, an eighth of a mile north of this segment.
Okay, so, at the moment, him giving up the 45 wouldn't help us. I, I'm just thinking down the road that if we, since we've already given up on the east side, the right-of-way at Palomino, and now we're giving it up at Sterling on the east side, and we haven't given any up on the west side, and we hang on to the west side, and we just hang on to the one that makes the jog for the 45 to make it so you can go back and forth there, that'll give us an option down the road, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. So, the, the property that's just north of this one, do we have the full 40 feet on that one?
From what I can see, you have it there.
Well, there's no reason for the transition on this one.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that, where that came from.
Yeah. But it's hard to say what's, what's already given and what's not. So, then I don't, then I take that, I don't think we need the transition so long as we have the full 40 feet just north of it.
As long as we have the other 20.
Yeah.
On the other side that gets us to where we have to go.
Right.
What we need to be careful of and flag is the east side.
Yes.
That connects us to that other 300 and something feet.
Yeah, that's where we get in trouble.
Right, so, if we can flag that some way, other than that, I don't have a problem approving this. So, we've got a motion and a second. Any other questions up here? Okay, call the question.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chris Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, you know, one, one second. I would just want one clarification on the motion. Is it as amended by Councilmember Bright Cruz?
No.
No, okay.
No, awesome. We're going to jump out of line because our state representative, Richard Stark, has arrived, and we greatly appreciate it. So, sir, the floor is yours.
Well, first, thank you. First of all, before I start, you know, I just, you know, I, I interact with some of your residents from time to time, and Andy Burns will tell you that that's the case because I do get calls, and I've even taken a look at somebody's property within the last few weeks, within the last few weeks. Said he had a problem, and I said, "No, that's with the city. The state can't take care of you." So, my thought was, and, and I mean this from the heart, is that, you know, people very often don't appreciate the hard work, and I'm talking about the work that you folks do. And city government, you are as close to the people as you can possibly get, and I really want to thank you for the hard work that you do, and I know that not everybody in the town always agrees with every decision that you make, but you're doing the best thing that you can to make this town run properly and to be the community that you wanted it, and so I commend you for that. I mean, I have to deal with 120 other state representatives, the governor, this and that, and, you know, there's, you know, we have one missing, but there's five of you all together, you know, plus, you know, plus the city government, and, you know, I don't care whether it's 7,500 residents or 160,000 residents, it's a lot of work. So, thank you very much for the work that you do, and also thank you for the, you know, because very often you come and visit me in Tallahassee, and I want to thank you for continuing to do that. Anyway, wanted to jump into just one thing because I know Senator Book was here earlier. During this legislature, although we had our biggest budget in the history of the state, which was $88 billion, we were advised very early within the session, "Don't expect your local projects to go through. Don't give us any water projects. We don't want to hear about them." And, at the same time, I, I've got to tell you that it, we, and I couldn't get this done for, I mean, I've got, you know, several, you know, I've got Weston, Pembroke Pines, and part of Davie as well, couldn't get projects through. However, I just, you know, it would keep it fingers crossed, it's relationships with other people in the, in the legislature, and I'm just so happy, you know, that we were able to get the project through for you with, you know, $500,000 project, and that's the, it's called Green Belt. Am I got that right?
Green Meadows.
Okay, anyway, all right, Green Meadows, Green Meadows. So, I'm very pleased that we were able to get that through, and there was a lot, all I can tell you is that there was a lot of wrangling going on back there, and I'm just glad that we, we were able to get that done. So, with that, congratulations, and hopefully we have a better year next year, and, because like last year, we had several that got done. This year, I'm glad this, this one got through, but we have so many areas in this area in South Broward and in the rest of the county that this did not get done. So, you know, congratulations, so I'm glad, glad we, it was a team effort between us, the Senate.
Awesome.
Your lobbyists, everybody, so, anyway. So, let me just tell you a little bit about this session. I'm not sure what topics Senator Book spoke of, but from what I see out there, very often we're speaking a lot of the same thing, but this past session, and every odd year, we meet early and every other year we meet later. So, this year, we met beginning in January. So, our session was from around the 10th of January to around the 10th of March. This coming year, it's going to begin in the first week of March and then the first week in May. But, the session was dominated by two events, and those were Hurricane Irma and the shooting at the high school, at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. And I just left, before I came here, I was with a PTA group over at Western High discussing, you know, much of the same issues, and I was placed on, I was, I volunteered to be on a committee that studied hurricane preparedness. We did not have the same committee in the Senate, but we met for four or five meetings. We came up with 175 recommendations for the state, and the committee was to study the after-effects of the hurricane, what worked and what didn't work. And, we came up with, like I said, 175 recommendations. We were going to put a, put a bill together, and then the Senate was working on something, and then we had the shooting at the high school. Changed the whole nature of the session, and it was dominated for the last month, you know, by, you know, by this. And, the one thing that I said to these parents that I just met with, and I'll say to anybody here, you know, within the town of Southwest Ranches, people think that their vote doesn't count. They think that we're going to put a group together, we're going to try to get something done, the legislature's not going to listen. But as I've been here for six years, I've seen many instances where people, even if it's a small group, want to get something done. It takes a while, it gets done. I've seen cases where there were elections where people win by 10 votes, 20 votes, 100 votes, whatever it is. So, your voices do count, and you want to get something done, and you really have the wherewithal, and you have popular support. It's going to get done. And I speak this completely about the bill that came out of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas tragedy. And me, I happen to be a Second Amendment person. I own a firearm, and I believe in, very strongly in people's, you know, Second Amendment rights. On the other hand, our state government has been, and I've had people tell me this when I walk the neighborhoods, that we've been too friendly for gun ownership in the state for too long, and I'll, I'll give you an example. We are one of the few states that constantly promotes expanding gun ownership over the last 20 years. It hasn't gone in any way, shape, or form in the other directions. So, what type of bills have we had since I'm in the legislature? And I'm not telling you they're all new, they're not good bills. The question is, this is only in one direction. So, what did we pass? We passed a bill when I, my first year up there called the Pop-Tart Bill. And I know you laugh. What is a Pop-Tart Bill? There was a student, a elementary school student in Maryland who was in the cafeteria, took a Pop-Tart and made it in the shape of a weapon, and he was suspended from school. Should not have been suspended from school. However, we put it into statute here that any student that makes a drawing or does something like this cannot be suspended from school. And a lot of us were saying, "Why don't you just let the schools implement that? You don't have to put that into statute." We deliberated bills, whether we're going to not allow carry permits on college campuses. We actually had a bill to allow weapons in county, the county courthouse, the, the airport terminal. We were even going to allow weapons into the chamber at the House of Representatives. Now, these bills did not go through, but we were considering this type of legislation. We have not considered any legislation in the past several years about, you know, if we're not going to put a ban on semi-automatic weapons, are we going to take a look at it and maybe regulate it a little bit more? Or are we going to allow local government, like the town of Southwest Ranches, to come up with your own legislation? If you feel within your, within the boundaries of Southwest Ranches, that you think that there should be a five-day waiting period instead of a three, why can't you do that? And, the way the law reads now, when it was changed in 2011, if any one of you on the town council decide that you want to go against the state, you can be removed from office, you can be fined up to $5,000, and your legal representation, your on your own dollar. And, so there are a few municipalities within, within the state now that are trying to get that overturned with a lawsuit. I happen to have promoted a bill this past session to overturn that regulation as well. And I did promise a number of the municipalities, including this one, that I would support local control of the, of the municipalities after I was elected, and I've been doing that while I was there, and I'm going to continue to, you know, protect you and whatever you, you know, I can't say whatever you ask, but you know that most of what you ask, you know, I try to get done for you. But anyway, so, we did pass a bill, and really it did come out of popular support. We had busloads of students and parents visiting us in the state capitol that really made quite an impression on the entire leadership, and I got to give credit, one of the people I do give credit to is Jose Oliva, who's going to be our next Speaker of the House in the next session, and he is a libertarian, very conservative, and he took a look at what was going on. He says, "If I will come up and craft a bill that will address," in other words, "if this is something that we feel that would have prevented this particular shooting, we're going to get that passed." So, what we came up with and what actually passed, and these are the features of the bill that passed, passed both houses of the state, and the governor signed it shortly after the session was over on March 10th. And that will be that from now on, long guns or rifles cannot be purchased, and ownership can't be by someone unless they are 21 years or older. Now, that doesn't preclude you from allowing, you know, members of your family that are under 21 from being able to use them, but it precludes you being able to go into a store and purchase one and to have the actual ownership in your name. Number two was the ban of the bump stocks. Now, I don't know if you recall, but right after the shooting in Las Vegas, there was a national push to ban the bump stock, and, I mean, I do, I'm sure that there's people at every venue I go to that may not understand the bump stock, but in case you're not familiar with the bump stock, it goes on the stock of a rifle, and on a semi-automatic weapon, it simulates automatic fire and allows you to pull the trigger much faster, simulating what can be considered automatic fire, and that's what they had in Las Vegas. That will go into effect on October 1st of this year, so can still buy it now up until October. Also, we did something else called risk protection orders. Now, I actually had a bill regarding risk protection orders. A risk protection order means that if you have somebody in your household that you feel has become mentally unbalanced, is not behaving properly, can be a danger to themselves and others, the bill that I had said that you could petition a court, and they could take the weapons away for a period of time. That, part of that bill made it into the, the school safety bill, which, if it's reported to police officers under certain circumstances, they can take weapons away for, you know, for, I think it's up to a year. And, that has already become law. It's actually been enforced even within Broward County. Also, there will be, as a result of this bill, more coordination between various law enforcement agencies. There was a breakdown in, in, just like we had in 9/11, between different departments not working with each other properly, so that's addressed. Also, the building number 12 where the shooting happened, that was the, what they call the freshman dorm or whatever term they used, that is actually going to be torn down, and a memorial is going to be put in its place. Also, more school infrastructure. Part of the bill calls for appropriations for, actually, $99 million was appropriated this year to address the structures in schools. Now, I, it's going to take really a lot of time. I mean, you know, we're reacting in a short time mode, but I spoke to police who told me, you know, "It's great, you're going to strengthen the door," but we had, we were shot right through the walls, you know, right through the drywall. So, we have, as much as we want to do, every time we sit down and think about this, we have more questions to ask. And, somebody mentioned to me tonight, "I think that there should be one single point of entry in the school. We should have a metal detector." And I replied, "Are you sure that that's what you want?" Because now you're taking about a single entry point, which is a place that you have everybody at risk at that entry point. So, it's never going to be an easy solution. Would I like a moratorium or ban on, on weapons like the AR-15? Yeah, I would. That's my opinion, but that's not necessarily the opinion of the rest of the state. Every statistic that I have actually read said that the, probably the best thing that we can do in the state is to expand background checks. About 22 to 25% of purchases of weapons are done by dealers who are not licensed. Licensed dealers, you must, they must follow the law, and I know, I insure one pawn shop, and they have told me, you know, that they have a lot of regulations to follow. They follow them. But if they were not licensed, they don't have to, they really basically don't have to do very much. And, so if one-fifth or more of your purchases are done that way, you know, this is a loophole that needs to be addressed. That may be among the best things that we, that we do. I can tell you that I have one of my closest friends in the legislature who's a lobbyist, came into my office, and we are working on a few bills together. We're very friendly. But on this particular item, we were not. And, he laid, he laid it out for me that, you know, "I like to hunt with my AR-15. I don't want you to take it away." And I understand exactly where he's coming from, but the one thing I can tell you is that this legislature is not ever going to be in a position where you're going to, where we are going to put in a ban on a particular weapon and then confiscate. It's just not going to happen. That's not the nature of the state, plus we have over 300 million weapons in private ownership in this country, and I don't think that it's possible to confiscate them. And, and I'm telling you, I'm a proponent of not ever doing that. So, you know, I, I know that you probably have a lot of people within the, within the boundaries of Southwest Ranches that are, you know, gun owners, so I'm letting people here know that, you know, I do favor some changes in our gun owner laws, but I'm not one of those people that's going to be favoring any kind of confiscation or anything that's very radical, but we do need to move the needle back over a little bit. It's really been going in one direction, and we've got to do something. And, I think that even when it's part of the conversation, where we're all talking about coming up with a solution to prevent more of these massacres, I think that something's going to happen because really up until now, after the Pulse shooting in Orlando, after Sandy Hook, after Las Vegas, it's like it happened for a few months, and then it stopped. We stopped really talking about it. And I think that we really have to hand it to the students, and we sometimes forget just how bright some of our students. I know that some people don't like the I know that some people don't like the Parkland Five, and I'm not necessarily speaking just about them, but I'm speaking about the high school students in general, who have shown tremendous amount of intelligence and, and, trying to think what the term is, but just basically working together to try to get something done. And I do want to commend them for that, and I know, I've heard a lot of that from, even from residents within Southwest Ranches, that they felt that something had to be done. So anybody want to contact me on that and speak about that, I am happy to do that. Now, there was one controversial part of the bill that I'm just going to bring up. If anybody wants to ask me a question when I'm done about it, I'm happy to talk about it. But the most controversial part about the bill was the arming of our school teachers. And I've only met one or two teachers who have said to me that they liked that portion of the bill. Now, the way the bill works, it says that if you are a classroom-only teacher, that that's your only duty, that you never have to volunteer for this. But if you are a teacher that does more, like you're a coach, you're the driver's ed teacher, you, you know, you run various clubs, that those are the, those are the types of people in the school who can be armed. Also, you know, cafeteria workers, the janitors, they're possibly part of this as well. But it can happen in a county, and each county, we have 67 counties in this state, and each county is its own school district. The school district itself has to agree to the program. More than likely, most of the districts will not, will not agree to this. The, the problem that I had with the bill is that, I mean, I mean, I can have my own opinions, I do have my own opinions, obviously, but I'm working for the public. And when I'm hearing from our teachers that they don't want to be armed, then I'm taking a vigilant stand, stating that I don't think that that's, that that should have been put into the bill, and I may be one of the representatives trying to take that portion out of the bill. If a teacher, if we do implement the program in the future, and that's what I'm concerned about, that we've now taken a precedent, it's there, and it can be implemented. As far as the teachers, they don't get paid any more money, they do have to go through 130 hours of training, and they get a one-time stipend of $500. I ask questions, as an insurance agent, I ask questions on the House floor, who covers the liability? What if, what if there's a shooting and a teacher shoots somebody? Who, who prevents, who takes care of that liability for the, nobody can answer the question. So we have just as many unanswered questions about how we're going to do some of these things as, as there are questions. So we've, we've got a lot to think about. And there is not one state representative, senator, US senator, or US congressperson who has told me that whatever we did here, or even if we banned the AR-15 tomorrow, we came up with universal background checks, that this is necessarily going to prevent more shootings. We really don't know. You know, we're really going to have to take a look at a lot of different things, and we're going to really have to have a conversation for a long time and not let this die down so that we don't have any more of these. I mean, Florida, I mean, think about it, Florida, within the last two years, we've had the Pulse shooting in Orlando, we had the shooting at the airport in, in Fort Lauderdale, and why we would think about a bill where we're going to allow people to bring guns into the terminal is beyond me, and I, you know, but somebody proposed that bill, and then we had the, the shooting at the high school in, you know, up in, in Parkland. And so we really, I think all of us have got to take ownership of trying to get something done, regardless of what side you're on, you know, when it comes to gun safety. If you're a, if you are totally a Second Amendment person, don't think we should make any changes, you still have to be part of that conversation. You really come, what's the solution going to be? What are we going to do, you know, to make some changes in this society so we don't continue to have these shootings? I mean, I mean, I don't know about you, but when I was in, in high school, and when I was a parent and I had students that were in high school and elementary school, I never thought about dropping them off to school in the morning and the possibility that they weren't going to return later on that day. And so this is, I mean, we had, my day, we had air raid drills. We, we thought that we could prevent the school from blowing up from a nuclear weapon, which was obviously not the case, but, I mean, these are more frequently happening. Of course, we've never had that. So those are just my, my two cents, so to speak, and I'm happy to speak to anybody here within Southwest Ranches or any of you on this. So let me just continue, and I'll try not to be too long, but here are some of the things that went on. We had an $88 billion budget. This is the largest in the history of the state. And while very often, I can tell you that I'm not happy with, with the education bill that we had, or health bills we had, you still have to consider that within this state, we spend two-thirds of our budgeted dollars towards health and towards education. The education budget this year for K through 12 in college is over $25 billion. And that's nothing to sneeze at. And you can imagine that the health budget's even bigger because that's a higher portion of our budget. And some of the things that we did this year, really more on the college, we passed a, we passed a bill for $400 million over last year for K through 12, but by the end of session, all of that $400 million increase went towards school safety. So we did not increase the salaries of our teachers this coming year, we did not add but just a few dollars to our per pupil funding. We're going to have to discuss that next year. The legislature was more of a mind to address school safety than it was increasing, you know, paying our teachers and, you know, more funding for students. Now, I happen to be a believer, and I said this to the PTA that I just met with, that I believe that our state should be taking a very strong look at what we pay our teachers and what we fund our students. Now, I happen to be a businessman. I don't come from the public sector, but I do believe in growing the business in this state. And I believe that every time I hear people moving into the state of Florida, the first thing that they're looking for are areas that have good schools. And if we want to continue to try to court bigger businesses to coming into the state, we really better think more about what we want to do with our K through 12. Now, we do very well on our universities. We have, thanks to the state of Florida, among the best college programs within the nation. And the state of Florida has something called the Preeminent Program. We give extra money every year to the University of Florida and to Florida State University. We want these to be top 20 schools, and we're getting close to it. In fact, people who, and now my family was a Gator family, but I live in Tallahassee near Florida State, and I want to see that university do well as well. Now, I can't tell that to my son, he'll have a fit, but that university, Florida State University on many programs is on a par now with the University of Florida. And next, we're going to be working probably on Central Florida or USF, which is in Tampa. And we're going to really, we're going to be working by university by university, trying to get them to be top-tier schools within this nation. Also, if you have college students, you may want to pass this on, the Florida Academic Scholarship, which is for Bright Futures, will now be funded again fully. And if you have college students that attend the summer programs, Summer A and Summer B, will be funded as well into Bright Futures, never has in the past. So this is a major leap. We're doing whatever we can to keep our best and brightest students within the state of Florida. So I, I commend the governor and leadership with both parties for really pushing to keep our universities among the best, the best in the nation. Just one or two last things. As a result of the hurricane, we came up with regulations that say that nursing homes and assisted living facilities must keep enough fuel on hand for at least three days. And in case there is a state emergency, must have a generator powered for 96 hours, at least, if their primary source of power goes out. And that they have to have between 20 and 30 feet per resident that's air-conditioned for them. And this was passed by both the House and Senate, and signed by the governor into law. And we put in a tax break for places up to 15,000 for generators at facilities, and Medicaid was, we put more dollars into Medicaid. A lot of our patients in assisted living facilities, and in particular, nursing homes, are funded by Medicaid. So by putting more dollars into Medicaid, I'd hope that that's, that's going to help these facilities to improve their infrastructure and, you know, be able to, you know, air-condition their locations. So that was an important thing. Now, I'm just going to tell you one interesting issue, because, you know, I don't want to be serious all the time, but every year I do a contest with high school students. We call it Democracy in Action. And I invite all the high schools in Broward County to meet with me before the legislature goes into session and to present a bill to me. And every year, we select at least one bill, some years two, and so far in my six years up there, we've passed three bills that come from high school students. Those, just to tell you, so some of these kids, so when I was commending this, the students at Marjory Stoneman Douglas, I mean, I'm telling you, these kids are great. They really come up with some great ideas. And just to be one that, you know, you think about, we found out from one of the students that military families go from state to state, location to location, very frequently. Very often, they're not anywhere for more than two years. And at that time, when I was, when we'd looked at this bill, you had to be in Florida for two years to be able to get college at the resident rate. So what are military families to do? So this student came up with the idea that we feel that as soon as you become a resident, you're in a military family, allow us to have the in-state tuition while we're residents of Florida. And I brought that up to the legislature, and they thought it was a great idea, and we passed it. And, you know, part of it had already been implemented on the federal level, and what we were able to do is we add, and I didn't even know this, that there are certain branches of the military that I had no idea were uniformed services. For example, the, the NOAA, which they, the weather guys. And we had a few others, they're actually, part of them are uniformed services. And when I actually presented the bill on the, in one of the committees, that had a whole group of, you know, parents that were, and people from military families coming up and thanking me. I didn't even promote the bill publicly, but this was a big deal to our military, and it came from our high school students, and that, this was actually from, from Western High School. And this year, the bill we had, very interesting, during the hurricane, there were reports by people that were hard of hearing, that were, went absolutely very, very upset because, and there were more than one instances, but the one video that I saw, there was an incident in Manatee County where they were giving a public announcement about the hurricane, and they brought the person in to, you know, to do the, to do the sign language, and it was gibberish. They, they were talking about ordering pizza, and about getting Big Bear, and about all sorts of crazy nonsense. So I came up, these high school kids came up with a bill that they, that during the time of a emergency, that you must have somebody who was properly trained in sign language. Now, I proposed that to the hurricane committee, and that recommendation was taken up, but it didn't get implemented. Then we got it through two committees as an actual bill, and then we had the incident at Marjory Stoneman Douglas, we couldn't advance, and that's what happened. A lot of the bills that we had, they just, you know, they just went away, we just didn't have time to deliberate. But just kind of interesting that in this state, we, we don't have people that sign properly, and, and our students were the ones who actually came up with the idea. So just thought you might find that a little bit interesting, and, and listen, my office is always interested in listening to different ideas, so, you know, I'm happy to always, you know, entertain anything that you may have here from Southwest Ranches or from any of our other districts. So with that, I'll leave it. I mean, I could, you know, we have so many things that we do in the legislature, even in a, even in a year we don't get a lot passed, you know, I could give a town hall for an hour. So I think that you've heard Representative Stark enough tonight, so thank you for having me here, and it's always, it is an honor and privilege really to work with, with you, and I'm, I'm very proud to be your state representative. I do have an election this year, so I have one more term, and then, then that's it. It's, one of the first people within Southwest Ranches that I spoke to about running for office was, is Gay Chapels here?
She was.
She was. Well, Gay Chapels was one of the first people that I spoke to about running for office, and I thank her for supporting me, and I thank you for the time to work with me.
Stay put, because Freddie's got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Are you good? Okay.
Oh, he's good.
He's good. Anybody else?
I have a comment, Rich. Thank, thank you for all you've done for us and continue to do for us, and, and I have to say, from what you're, the synopsis you gave me, you're on the right track.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
You're, you're doing all the right things. I just want to mention that.
And I'd also like to recognize Mr. Stark, who came to hear part of my speech.
Awesome. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Back to our regular scheduled agenda, number 10.
Mayor, this is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the, of the town of Southwest Ranches by amending Article 3, Chapter 22 of the Code entitled Cable Television, amending Section 22-88 of the Code by providing that a certificate holder as defined in Section 610, 103, subsection, subsection 1, subsection 4, Florida statute shall comply with the Town of Southwest Ranches Communication Rights of Way ordinance. Article 2, Chapter 22, Sections 22.18 through 22.31 of the Town Code for placing or maintaining a cable system or facilities in the town public rights of way. Repealing and replacing Article 2, Chapter 22, Sections 22.9 through 22.31 entitled Placement of Facilities and Rights of Way with new Sections 22.18 dash through 22.27 and creating the Town of Southwest Ranches Communication Rights of Way ordinance, providing intent and purpose, applicability and authority to implement, providing definitions, providing for registration for placing or maintaining communications facilities in the public rights of way, providing requirement of a permit, providing application requirements and review procedures, providing for performance bond, providing for construction methods, providing development and objective design standards, providing for fees and taxes, providing enforcement remedies, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for repeal of zoning in progress, and providing an effective date.
Mayor, if I may.
Go right ahead.
Do you recall that we were required to amend our telecom ordinance as a result of Florida statutory changes, some federal changes as well? It's with pleasure that I introduce our telecom expert, Gary Resnick, who's here tonight. Gary has advised me that he has three versions of the presentation, three-minute, five-minute, and 20-minute. I suggested the three may be appropriate, but he came over here before and he said, listen, you know, if Rick went that long, maybe I should too, and, so I'll leave it to him, but at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Gary Resnick.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Council members, Gary Resnick. I have the privilege of representing the town on communications matters. The ordinance, and this will be the, hopefully, the five-minute abridged version, but all that information was very, very important and valuable, so I'm sure you found it worthwhile. The ordinance that's before you has been the subject of a lot of development, a lot of input within the town so far. This has gone to the planning board for a hearing that I attended, your community services manager, and town manager, and town attorney, and other staff were incredibly involved in the development of this ordinance. Other committees as well have looked at the ordinance and provided input for various provisions of the ordinance. So it has, it's been the product of really a collaborative effort by everybody that's either going to have to implement this ordinance or it's going to affect so far in the town, with the exception of obviously the town council. So I have a relatively brief presentation that your town clerk loaded, and I also have hard copies, if you'd prefer a hard copy, if you can't see it on the screen. So first, with respect to the ordinance, and I'll get into the telecom portions of it, but your code had a provision in it, your code had a cable ordinance in it that was very old, back from the 90s when local governments could regulate cable and did local franchising. That was taken away by state statute many years ago, and now cable services within local governments to your residents are governed by state statute. So the first portion of the ordinance is basically to delete those provisions of your code that are inconsistent with state statute with respect to cable services. Cable is now franchised at the state level. The town does retain some authority with respect to free services to town buildings and the PEG channels, the government access channels that you operate. But basically, everything else having to do with cable was taken over at the state level, with the, the key exception of permitting. If a cable company is going to use your public rights away, they now, they need to obtain a permit from the town, the same as any other communications company, which brings me up to the cable, the Communications Rights of Way ordinance, which is the main subject of the ordinance that's before you. So the reason we need to do this is Florida passed in 2017 a statute known as the Advanced Wireless Infrastructure Deployment Act. It's a mechanism for wireless facilities, wireless companies to install their facilities in the rights of way. It, it uses a technology called small cell technology, which I'm going to talk a little bit further about, and basically says that local governments can only regulate the placement and installation of those facilities consistent with state statute. Became effective in July 1st. Became effective in July 1, 2017. It only affects town and county public rights away. It does not affect state public rights away. The state is exempt, so they can treat these facilities any way they want. And so you need to deal with this, and you have to put the appropriate regulations in your ordinance. Otherwise, the industry could come in and install their facilities without any regulations. If you can, so similar, this was a key priority of the wireless industry in 2017. It passed in Florida with only three no votes. I will tell you that Representative Stark was one of the no votes. And similar legislation passed in a number of other states, which is shown on the screen. There's court challenges in Ohio, not related to the constitutional challenges, but just procedural challenges, which have been successful. There is a, there is a constitutional challenge to similar legislation in Texas, brought by the large cities and counties in Texas, and that's going through the federal courts. So if that's thrown out, then that would be interesting with respect to Florida statute. And the governor of California vetoed the legislation in California. So basically, it provides that the town cannot prohibit regulator charge for a co-location of small wireless facilities in public rights of way outside of the regulations allowed under state law. So we're talking about basically four things that are going to look to be installed in your rights of way. And there is interest by the industry in installing these things in your rights of way. You have, your town staff has been contacted by these companies, and they want to install these in your rights of way. So we're talking about first, co-locating a small wireless facility, which is basically an antenna structure on an existing utility pole or structure in the rights of way. Installing a new utility pole for co-location of a small wireless facility. Installing what's called a micro wireless facility. Those are relatively small. They can be installed on existing cable strands that are over the rights of way. And I have pictures of all these things that you'll see. And then these need basically equipment cabinets, or what's also called small wireless facilities that can be up to 28 cubic feet, or the size of large refrigerators, to be installed in your rights of way as well. So let's, this is the definition of a small wireless facility from the statute. It's a, the antenna portion is no larger than six cubic feet in volume. And the, as I indicated, the equipment cabinet housing the electronics can be no larger than 28 cubic feet in volume. Next. The statute has very, very short timeframes for your staff to process these things. So when you get an application, staff has 14 days to review it for completeness, and then 60 days to grant or deny it. And if it's not denied, it's deemed granted. So it's a very short timeframe for your staff to process these applications once they're received. There are grounds to deny an application. You can deny a facility if it would interfere with the safe operation of traffic, would interfere with sightlines or clear zones, would interfere or be inconsistent with the ADA or similar statutes, fails to comply with DOT regulations for use of the rights of way, or fails to comply with what they, what's called applicable codes. And an applicable code is this ordinance. So your ordinance now sets forth the regulations by which these facilities are going to have to comply with. And it also includes uniform building, fire, electrical, public safety codes that are, that apply for everything. So they're subject to the Florida Building Code, National Electrical Safety Code, et cetera. They're also subject to your ordinance. And local ordinance can set what's known as objective design standards, which are basically the location and aesthetic requirements for these facilities. So your ordinance, and again, this was with the input of staff and a lot of committees, contains very detailed objective design standards and location standards for these facilities. And they can be waived. The statute requires that there's a waiver process. If an applicant applies for a waiver to a standard that's in your ordinance, the staff has to grant or deny that within 45 days. So if you can, all right. So your proposed ordinance contains all of these provisions consistent with the Florida statute. As obviously, these are all new terms. This is, these facilities have never been allowed in rights of way before, so there's all new definitions for these facilities. In addition, pursuant to state law, you can require a registration, insurance, security funds, indemnification, provide that there's no warranties, deal with abandoned facilities in the rights of way, require a performance bond for construction. Your ordinance contains all of those provisions. In addition, there's application procedures. One thing I built into your ordinance because of the short timeframes your staff have to review these, and they can get a lot of applications at once. Under the statute, a party can submit one application for up to 30 locations, and all of those have to be reviewed. So what I wrote into your ordinance is basically the requirement for a pre-application meeting, where they have to come in before they actually submit an application. Just come and meet with your staff and explain to them what they're intending to do, what the facilities are going to look like, and where they'd like to install them. Your ordinance also has construction standards, construction methods by which they have to install these facilities. So it, the state statute provides that these facilities can be installed on town-owned utility poles. And you may say, we don't own any utility poles. But utility pole is defined to include not only the electric utility poles, which they need an agreement with FPNL for, because they can't use their private property without an agreement. But they can be installed on light poles, traffic signal poles, any other pole that's in the rights of way, as long as it's at least 15 feet, would constitute a utility pole. So if you own light poles in the rights of way, they could conceivably be installed on your light poles. The maximum you can charge is $150 per pole per year. So this is basically a taxpayer subsidized venture for the industry that made $60 billion last year. No editorializing, sorry. And they cannot compromise the pole's finish or integrity, and they have to still be inconsistent with the Florida Building Code and other safety codes. They have the ability, though, if a pole can accommodate their facility, because it wouldn't be safe, they have the ability to structurally change the pole at their cost, or to replace the pole at their cost. So, and they will look to do that. So let's talk about the objective design standards that we've included in your code. And these are specific to the design and aesthetics that would fit within Southwest Ranches, and also the location context. So first, there's location restrictions in your ordinance. They cannot be located in any location that would interfere with traffic pedestrians or other users of the rights of way. They cannot be, basically create a nuisance for adjacent property owners or businesses, because they will look to install these in residential areas as well as commercial areas. And they, they could not interfere with your drainage system. We've blocked out any location that would interfere with your drainage plans for the town. Something that's important for your town is there, the state statute preserved HOA, or homeowner associations, covenants and restrictions. So they, this ordinance basically says that they can only be located in HOA where it would be consistent with the covenants and the restrictions. So if a homeowners association has or adopts covenants and restrictions with respect to utility poles within the HOA, these would be subject to that. Also, we've blocked out any areas that would be inconsistent with capital improvement projects, or any other similar types of projects that the town may undertake in the public rights of way. Or even adjacent to the public rights of way, where it would be inconsistent to have these facilities located there. So I don't know if you can see the picture there. I actually took this picture. I'm not a great photographer. I cut off the top. But that's the type of pole that we're talking about. This is downtown Cleveland, by the way. This is in front of the main library in Cleveland. That's the pole that we're talking about. The poles can be as tall as the tallest pole in the rights of way. If there is no, within 500 feet, if there is no pole within 500 feet, the pole can be 50 feet. Then we're talking about the small wireless facility that would be attached to the top of the pole. Can you go on to the next? Thanks. And then we're also talking about the, basically, the equipment box. That's also called the small wireless facility, that can be up to 28 cubic feet, located in the rights of way. This happens to be a box that's owned by Crown Castle that was wrapped. You can require that these facilities, and you do in your ordinance, can require that these facilities be wrapped by the, by the applicants. So let's see, some of the other objective design standards. For your town, the, the town input was that they wanted the, the design of the utility poles to basically look like a faux wood grain pole, even though it would not be actually wood grain. It would look like a faux wood grain pole. And the same for the, for a shroud is basically an equipment covering that would be on the side of the pole to hide wires and equipment that would be either inside the pole or attached to the pole. Your ordinance doesn't allow any exposed wires, and so they'd have to cover wires with a shroud, a metal covering. Again, it would be with that faux wood grain finish, so that would blend into the pole. And those equipment boxes that I showed you the picture of, we are requiring at least 200 feet before, between such boxes. Otherwise, the industry will tend to cluster these and put a lot of them in one location. And so by requiring spacing requirements of 200 feet, you protect against clustering. So I have, we're going back to some pictures. If you could go backwards a little bit, Russell? That's a picture of the micro wireless facility that the cable industry will install on the wires in the rights of way. You cannot require permits for these. We put in your, they're, they're very, they're limited in dimensions. The antennas can only hang down 11 inches. The whole facility can only be two cubic feet. So we require that they demonstrate to your town staff that they meet those dimensions, but then they're allowed to install those without permits from the town. All right, you can go to the next one.
Has anybody done any study on how that thing holds up in a hurricane?
They're supposed to comply with the Florida Building Code.
That looks like a projectile.
Well, the hurricane, I guess it depends on the hurricane. And if the pole's going down, they're going down.
Well, I mean, it looks like it's going to rip off the wire.
If it's a minor hurricane, or they supposedly will withstand that.
It does look like a projectile.
But that's why we have the insurance requirements and indemnification and some of the other requirements that are in here. So this is an example of the small wireless facility that encloses the antennas, that cannot be larger than six cubic feet. In your ordinance, we've banned them from the mast arm of a pole, so they could be attached on the pole itself or on top of the pole. So that, that type of installation would not be possible in your town. If you go to the next page, this is actually a picture of good technology that T-Mobile uses. What they did is they replaced the Cobra head of a light pole with the small wireless facility. There's, it's hard to see, but there's little antennas hanging down from that Cobra head, barely visible. And all the wires are inside the pole. And this technology does not need an equipment box at each antenna location. So it's, from an aesthetic standpoint, it's preferable. The one thing about this technology that is not dealt with really sufficiently in the statute, your ordinance deals with it, all of these facilities need to be connected via fiber. They're going, the purpose of these facilities is to provide stronger wireless service, not voice service, but wireless data service in areas of the town where they need to densify their signal. Basically, we're not, these facilities are not going to expand service in rural areas or in inner-city areas that may not have good coverage. They're purely to increase coverage in areas where it's most profitable for the industry to deploy these facilities. You have a lot of areas like that, apparently. And so what they're looking to do, and this is, these are pictures of the actual facilities installed in some urban areas or suburban areas. So what they're looking at doing is having the, having a fair number of these, because the, they're called small wireless facilities, not because of the size of the facility, but because the signal only travels at most maybe 300 feet. So they need a relatively large number of these. And they all have to be connected via fiber, which is going to disturb your rights of way, because they typically want to bury the fiber. And so there's regulations in this ordinance to control the construction methods for digging up the rights of way. They're generally not allowed to do excavation unless your town staff approves that. Your public rights of way engineering department would deal with that. They're supposed to, they have to get permits, obviously, for that. They have to get a construction bond. They're supposed to use directional bore or some other type of method, so as not to constantly dig up the rights of way or have them being excavated. So there's protections, to the extent that we could, built into your ordinance to deal with construction of the fiber that's going to have to accompany these facilities. If you go out, these are, again, some pictures. These are, your application requirements are very specific. They require detailed information as to the type of facility, what it looks like, the dimensions, GPS coordinates, a survey to show that it actually is within the rights of way, photo sims, all of the things that your staff would need to process the application. And because they have such a short time to review the applications, we put the burden on the applicants to provide all the information that they may want to obtain, but it's required as part of the application process. And that's it in terms of kind of a high-level look at your ordinance. One caveat to all of this is the Federal Communications Commission has been looking at adopting regulations dealing with these facilities in the rights of way for about two years. They created an advisory committee called the Broadband Deployment Advisory Committee. It's 30 people. 28 are from the industry, two are from governments. So we're expecting their, they've already come out with a model state code. That is awful. It makes Florida's statute look like something that we would really, really like. And they're also coming up with a model local ordinance. We don't know when they're going to, what EFCC is going to do with all of this, but the EFCC is probably this year going to adopt some regulations. Our hope is that it doesn't preempt state laws, so that the Florida statute still will apply, because it will be worse than the Florida statute. And that they don't mandate regulations in every local government that has adopted an ordinance, because they could preempt local codes as well. And we've been working with the EFCC with respect to this matter as well, but you never know what that agency is going to do at this point. So I'm available to answer any questions that you have, that you may have?
I don't have any questions per se. I mean, I think that was a great, appreciate the overview, but I, you know, being involved in the, with the comp plan and all this, going through it, I appreciate your expertise in bringing that to the table, because this obviously is something that's important to our town. Our rural lifestyle is, could certainly be strongly impacted by seeing this equipment all over the place. And so we're appreciative of the fact that we're, I feel like we've done as much as we can possibly do to protect.
I will tell you, I didn't mention it in the presentation, but I know the town has multipurpose trails, horse trails. They're exempt from these facilities under your ordinance.
Good.
So, which you wouldn't really want a horse.
Right.
Riding into one of these cabinets anyhow.
Right.
For purposes of a horse or the cabinet. So it's really for public safety purposes.
For, for purposes of the record, Mayor and Council, we have received letters within the last three hours by most of the telecom companies, asking you to defer or deny the ordinance.
That's on the table. I think they all wanted to defer.
Right.
Yeah. Wanted to defer the item that's on the table tonight. Of course, it's an ordinance that will have second reading. Gary will be speaking to these providers prior to second reading, and we may make one or two language tweaks based upon his communications with them. But at this time, we'd like you to pass it on first reading.
All right. I need a motion in a second.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Open it to the public.
John Eastman, 188th Avenue. Counsel, I don't know if you've been keeping up with the emails. I've been sending you over the past year and a half on 5G. This came out of left field. It went through the federal government like lightning. And our state government picked it up. Bob just told me they spent $40 million in lobbying and campaign contributions to get this through the Florida Legislature. Rick Stark voted against it. I sent him the same information I sent you, and he actually read it and said, hey, this isn't a good deal. You know, they're taking our local control away. And, you know, the one thing I don't see in our ordinance is a certificate from each one of these operators who'll be placing these devices in front of our homes, a certificate of health, that these wavelengths that they're going to be emitting into our homes without our permission will not be affecting our mitochondria and our cellular development, keeping us up at night. EMF does strange things to, to the body. It's been proven. And the frequencies that they're proposing to use are not just one band, they're multiple bands. They're harmful to humans and other, anything that's alive. And, you know, we have not had this stuff vetted. It hasn't been vetted. They know it's harmful, but they don't care, because it's big telecom pushing this through. Keith, you got a great guy. Gary, you did a great job on this. This is, you know, you're doing the best you can with it. This is, you know, you're doing the best you can with it. But I'm hoping that that court fight out in Texas is successful, and hopefully some communities in Florida will get together and sue our state legislature, because they overstepped their bounds here, big time. We should have local control over what we want in our town. And personally, I don't think that a for-profit company should be able to come in and install equipment like this in front of my home. And I think that, you know, you're, you're dancing with a gorilla here, and you're doing the best you can with it. But there are health issues, there are proven health issues, and, you know, it was never looked at. It was never addressed. It's just big telecom with all their money pushing it through. And shame on the state legislature for passing that bill. And all we can do is hope that sooner or later, the courts rectify this. And any chance our town has to jump on a lawsuit, we should definitely do it. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198th Terrace. Mayor Resnick, thank you for all your help on this. It was a pleasure meeting with you about a month and a half, two months ago, to go through this whole thing, because I read through it before you introduced it to us, and I had a million questions. One, we, we reviewed it two weeks ago, and there was something that I didn't see in there that I didn't want to ask about. If you recall, when we talked about it at the comp plan board, we had asked if we could get these things installed in the ground rather than as an eyesore in front of somebody's house or mounted halfway up the pole right outside of my picture window. Is it still possible? Or I didn't see that you had written that into the ordinance to say that these things need to be out of sight, buried, or something that would be a little more aesthetically pleasing than a plastic wrap box. So.
Go ahead.
Thank you for, for hiring a professional to get this all worked out. This was excellent.
I'll let you answer it when they're all done.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I was assuming.
Yep.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
Bitch.
But a lot of the things John said is right. I mean, we got steamrolled by a big organization that had a huge amount of money to spend. And for all the talk of local control I hear come out of Tallahassee and Washington, not when there's money involved. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Back to us.
Mayor, maybe Gary can answer the question.
Yeah, could you answer his question?
No, just for the question.
No, you can do it from right there.
It's on the.
Got it. Yeah, you got it.
With respect to the health effects, unfortunately, or, forget about unfortunately, the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 preempts local governments from adopting regulations or making decisions with respect to applications for telecom facilities based on perceived health effects of RF radiation emanating from the facilities. So you are totally preempted by federal law from regulating RF emissions or from taking any action with respect to RF emissions in, in a potential application. So as much as that may be a concern, and it is a concern for a lot of residents, the local governments, unfortunately, based on federal law, do not have any authority over those issues. So that addresses the first comment. The second comment with respect to undergrounding, your, the state statute does preserve local authority with respect to undergrounding requirements, but you can't discriminate based on a particular technology or a particular facility. So your ordinance that we've drafted does preserve the undergrounding requirements of the town. So in areas where you don't allow any above-ground facilities, they would not be able to install a new utility pole with a new small wireless facility attached to it or an equipment cabinet attached to it. But in areas where you do not mandate that all utilities be installed underground, they could install these facilities. That's covered by state law. So. Technology, obviously, wireless technology will not work underground. So basically, in an area where you don't allow any above-ground facilities, the technology will not work there. You will not have that service there. So.
Okay.
I don't know if that answered the, that addressed the question.
As good as we can do, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions up here? No other questions? All right, call the question.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fiskelli?
Yeah.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do you want, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Gary.
There's also, later on the agenda is
And Mayor.
progress on telecom. We don't need Gary Resnick to stay for that. Everyone okay?
Yeah, he can go. Absolutely.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a change order with Advanced Modular Structures, Inc. in the amount of $14,531.00 to upgrade the electrical work for the fire modular project at 17220 Griffin Road and to remove an existing canopy, approving a fiscal year 2017-2018 budget amendment, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to issue a purchase order and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Back to us. Any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discuss?
Well, maybe Andy can just give a couple words on and why we're doing this, what it's about.
Yeah, this is just electrical upgrade, and it obviously was over, over my dollar authority, but it's, it's part of the modular replacement out at the fire station. It was an upgrade to the fire panel that became necessary for the new modular unit and to meet the requirements for the department.
Okay, yeah. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fiskelli?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Thomas M. Skorini Services LLC for police civilian coordinator services, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, Mayor.
Awesome. Eddie, yes, go ahead.
If I may.
Go right ahead.
Certainly before the public comment, as you recall at the last meeting, you all approved a modification of the public safety contract with Davy for police and fire services. And I told you that I'd be bringing you back at, at a future meeting, a contract for those services.
Right.
And I wanted to introduce you all formally, publicly, to Davy Officer Skorini, who's gonna be leaving the Davy Department and assuming the responsibilities, joining us here in the town as our police department liaison, police services. So for those, I know you all had a chance to meet him briefly. I want to thank him for his patience sitting there tonight and his, his, his poor but gracious wife who had to join us and sit
We apologize.
at the retirement meeting. So thank you, Kristen, for being here as well.
Rip.
Yeah. Do we have any public comment on this matter?
I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for giving the opportunity. I've always been welcomed with open arms by the town. It's something I'm honored and humbled by. So my wife and my family, we thank you.
Awesome. Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Need a motion in a second.
We made a motion.
We did all right.
Yeah.
That's all right.
All right.
Okay.
I would just like to say that it's great to have you here. I'm glad that Andy and Town of Davy and yourself could all get together and
Make it happen.
find a way to make it happen, exactly.
Yeah, absolutely. We're thrilled.
We are.
So greatly and welcome aboard. So. Go ahead, call the question.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fiskelli?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Unanimous. Welcome aboard.
Okay.
Item 13 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing a new emergency line of credit note in the principal amount not to exceed, this is for council to determine, to provide financing to meet recovery costs related to a declared state of emergency affecting the town and costs related thereto, covenanting to repay such note from reimbursements received by the town from FEMA and the state of Florida, and covenant, covenating to budget and appropriate funds from legally available, non-ad valorem revenues, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement, loan note, and other such loan documents deemed necessary to repay such note, providing for the adoption of representations, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
Okay, yeah. Can I get a motion in a second, and then we'll pass?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
You know, the motion to approve should have the amount that you're, you're contemplating, because it's, what are you approving? It's blank.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, I have looked at this in detail, and I'll say the motion that I would make is for the $10 million.
Agreed.
Okay, so is the second agreed to, a motion to approve with an amount not to exceed $10 million?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the motion on the table.
Okay. Marty? Ball's in your court.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, council members. For the record, my name is Martin Sherwood, and I am the town's financial administrator. We are all on item 13 of tonight's agenda. I'll try to keep this short to the five minutes. I hope, and I'm glad the clock's not working for this, so we'll
It is here.
That's good. That's good. I know a new one is on the way. Okay, before, first, before I get started, I would like to introduce a Mr. Dell Joseph, who's a senior vice president here tonight from TD Bank. And he is available to answer any questions that you may have after my presentation. I have known Dell for almost 20 years now. Long time. We met at a state FGFOA conference back in, way back, 2000, from what I recall. That's back when you were with SunTrust Bank. And he was there stuck in continuing education like I am, and I was fortunate to meet him. And yes, he is a CPA, which is a rarity in the banking industry. But what is even more unique is the fact that his specialty is with governmental, and I believe some commercial lending, lending and finance. So thank you for being here tonight. With that in mind, I have a banking joke. And I wanted to tell this joke back in 2013, in 2016, but he wasn't here. When I moved down here in 1980, I had a big ambition, University of Miami MBA, and I had an excellent money banking and finance class, working towards MBA, a professor named Zayak. And he all drilled into us the fact that we were all gonna be CEOs, CFOs, and in order to be successful in business, you must make three people happy. The, that was the rule of the game, in order to make three people happy. The first is your spouse or significant other, because he says you're gonna have a hard time out there in, in the real world, and you need support, and you need to make your spouse happy. The second is your boss. That's all of you here tonight. And they said, and if you don't have a boss, and you own your own business, it's your customers. So without your customers and without your boss, you're not gonna be successful in business. Third thing, narrowing it right down, is your banker. He says, you're gonna need one to be successful in business. So one of my tasks was to go out and meet a banker. That was back in 1980. And he said, you must keep your banker happy. So if there's anything I say tonight, you let me know later. I'll, I'll make you happy, okay? The critical decision tonight, as Town Attorney Keith mentioned, Polikoff, was the fact that it's not really which bank to select. We, we did have a competitive offering, which I'm gonna get into, but the critical details, which you've already designated, is the amount of the line of credit that you should choose. And that line of credit was on the table at 6.5 million or 10 million, and that hopefully will be in effect for a full five years. So that's the important thing to consider, and we'll address that later. As a background, I want you all to know, Andy and I started this process with this line of credit a full year ago, about this time last year. As part of the budget process, we had to determine the cost, the timing, the strategy for that, and we were able to budget sufficient funds, which I'm proud of, in order for it to not to be a hardship for this fiscal year. So that was a significant milestone, is, is, is just getting the ground, laying the groundwork off the table. And we approached Centennial Bank with interest for early renewal options. Unfortunately, they were not interested. Hurricane Irma came around. We immediately proceeded to contact the Florida League of Cities, try to determine interest throughout the state of Florida for a pooled line of credit interest. Unfortunately, the League of Cities wasn't interested of offering line of credits. This is one of our past lenders we dealt with in the past. However, they did steer us in the direction of other bankers, Wells Fargo, Bank of America, SunTrust, and BB&amp;T. And BB&amp;T fortunately was one of the formal respondents, so that was successful. Another strategy is we approached the Florida Association of Counties. That is another lender back with our 2001 offering, debt series 2001, that we recently paid off and refinanced with TD Bank. Thank you, Dell. And the unfortunate thing is, after filling out extensive application with JP Morgan, we got turned down. And the, the reason was similar across the board, was highly leveraged presently with the amount of debt we have, and too small of a population base. Unfortunately, they didn't care of our potential tax base and our rural desire, played no significance of bearing. So with that in mind, I'm just happy that after contacting TD Bank with the need, I believe, and we can ask TD, Dell tonight, TD Bank came up and rise and shine, because as of three years ago, TD Bank told me they do not offer line of credits. So we may be one of the first that TD Bank is offering. So as you say, Southwest Ranches breaks new territory. We've done it again tonight. We, we've got a major financial institution offering us a line of credit who by chance happens to be the best terms and conditions. So again, thank you for that. Now, let's go into the submissions, the vetting, the analysis. We utilized and obtained the professional financial advisory firm of PFM to analyze all our all-in costs and interest rate analysis on both a current basis and, it was based on their recommendation and staff, to present a historical 18-year basis for, from each submitted proposer to ensure the lowest rate by issuance type is selected. So before I go into the competitive interest rate details, let me discuss the types of issuance and why we're steering you now to the tax-exempt bank-qualified issuance. There's the three types, and I have six slides and schedules up, but since this is the short version tonight, I'm only gonna need to show two, okay? The first is a taxable, the taxable issuance, the good, and, and the positive is that there are no IRS rules and regulations required, i.e., no bond counsel required. The bad factor, it is, of course, a taxable issuance has the highest interest rate. Moving to the second type of issuance is a tax-exempt, non-bank-qualified issuance. So the third being the tax-exempt bank-qualified issuance. So the difference between non-bank-qualified and bank-qualified is basically your $10 million threshold, which is the maximum line of credit we're offering on the table tonight, and which is a significant increase to the 4.5 million and recommended to put in place, as we'll discuss further. So the good thing is it's a lower interest rate than the taxable issuance. The bad thing, or the bad factor, is the fact that it does have IRS rules and regulations that are required, including bond counsel. Finally, the third, and the major factor being based on our need and the fact that it is the lowest rate required, is a it is the lowest rate required, is a tax-exempt bank-qualified issuance. The good being it's the lowest interest rate. The only thing unfavorable, as previously mentioned with the other tax exempt, is the fact it does have IRS rules and regulations required, which of course means, the primary component, which is a whole seminar and training, is arbitrage. You can't borrow money and invest the money at a higher interest rate. That is not permissible for IRS rules and regulations. So, you get IRS tax-exempt status, they don't want you borrowing it to go out and earn a higher interest rate than your favorable tax rate. So, no problem there. Our interest rate, not that we would need an emergency line of credit to invest it, but our cash investment, we're at approximately 1.69. Obviously, this interest rate is going to be at 2.61 or higher. So, there's not going to be any concern about arbitrage moving forward for it. Now that we covered the different types of issuance, let's move on right to the screen on top with the PFM costs, the all-in costs, which I had them rank from left to right with a ranking of current interest rates for what staff is recommending for your consideration tonight. The tax-exempt, let me see if I can get the pointer on. This is our left and right. And here we go. If you look at the top, I can't point, unfortunately, Mayor, Council, on the TV, as you know. So, the page number we all need to refer to on the PFM report, which is Exhibit B, it's four of nine. All we're going to be covering is page four and five of the nine, of the nine options. Because these two pages strictly pertain to the tax-exempt bank-qualified issuance. So, from left and right, you will see the TD Bank is ranked, and this is based on the interest rate terms. This proposal is ranked by the lowest to highest interest rate. Left to right, you will see the positioning of TD Bank at 6.5 million. Right next to it is the 10 million. Then Centennial Bank comes in second with the six and a half and 10 million. And then BB&amp;T gets, is ranked third. Moving to the, moving down to the next schedule, which is the tax-exempt bank-qualified historical rate summary, ranked lowest to highest with a, the average, the average rate. That's your 18-year historical rate, which is highlighted in orange. Trying to get the pointer going. If those who are following me, pointers may have died on me. I'm going left and right. Circle, yeah.
Yeah, you're shooting me.
Ah, here we go, okay. Gee, I gotta, I gotta be nine feet tall to do this, okay? All right, here we go. Well, I have to get ready, used to this for the budget process. Here we go. All right, so we got the ranking on the lower screen is based on your average rate since 2000. And you will see 2.67 under the TD Bank, six and a half based on the prime rate. Then it's 2.73, the TD Bank on LIBOR. The number three happens to be the 10 million. The difference going across, you will see in green, is your six and a half million options, moving across from right to left. And your yellow is highlighted of your $10 million options. So, straight across from left to right, you will see that TD Bank becomes the number one on a historical basis and a current basis. Now, the caveat to all this, for anyone that's really looking at this and technical, is that both these reports came out, and I have to go on a record for this, this came out on March 20th. And at that time, the prime rate was 4.5%. Well, that week, two, three days later, it raised 25 basis points. So, however, I just need to reiterate, it does not affect the ranking and the analysis. I've went through, and PFM has confirmed, with the spread of the, the prime and the LIBOR also increased in parity. So, the ranking remains the same. But I, but I do need to know...
You're way past your five minutes.
Okay. I'm sorry. All right, so I got past the, we understand the green, we understand where the yellow falls. And you want to all understand that the TD Bank proposal is your number one choice. Now, by the way, there is something, two things I want to indicate by this analysis, is the fact that, I first want to thank Councilmember Bright Cruz, because he had the ability to review the proposals, and he, and he gave me his analysis. And I just want to let you know, he provided this to me before I officially, I have the piece of paper here, before I received the final PFM report, and he hit it right on target. TD Bank, with the all-in costs, the interest rate was ranked first with, depending on the scenario, BB&amp;T and Centennial ranked second and third. So, thank you for that.
Awesome.
The other item is savings. Oh, I have to communicate, it's in the council communication, the importance, because right now, even from a current interest rate factor in savings, we're looking in the neighborhood of a reduction in interest expense of 43%, up to 43%, depending on which line you go for exactly. It's 43%, and it turns out to be a 38% savings, potential savings. Of course, we, we never want to use this line of credit. This line of credit is only for emergency disaster purposes. But if we need to, based on what we're presently paying, and the, and the competitive bid process that we have just gone through for an entire year, the town will be saving 40% less than what we're presently paying. And you're more than doubling your line capacity. So, that's a tremendous milestone. Okay. All right, now let's move on to the amount of line. I'm on my last page, Mayor, so we're moving very fast.
I'm just going to have to turn your mic off.
Okay, so, we need a policy decision from Council on the amount of line. That's an important concept that you need to be aware, is, as I mentioned, it's for declared emergency disaster purposes, of which are deemed for qualified natural disaster expenses. FEMA and the Florida state authorities fail to provide full, which they have indicated to us, and you're all aware, we're not getting full reimbursement for any of the, of any or all the expenses we incur. So, it ranges from 75% up to 100%, but the 100% portion of what we've incurred is very small. Since 2008, 2009, the state of Florida, through the Department of Emergency Management, has changed the method of reimbursement. And the method that changed now requires actual proof of payment first. And when I say payment, you got to cut a check, you have to present it to the vendor, the check has to clear, and then you have to obtain a copy and submit and go through the entire paperwork process to get reimbursement, which takes a minimum of 60, and you've all read about stories with FEMA and the state of Florida, some haven't even received their refunds, going back to 2011, Katrina, Katrina, people still haven't received the money. So, this buys us time and enables us to submit reimbursement, because we'll have the cash if the need should arise. The past discussion?
I'm done.
Okay, wait, I'm almost at the end. Two more comments. All right, two more comments is that you will see from page 108 of 142 on our agenda, the Hurricane Wilma expenses, our Hurricane Irma expenses, cat four, cat three. Obviously, our amount of exposure exceeds our unassigned general fund fund balance. So, that presently exists at 2.7 million, so this line of credit is badly needed. And capacity. The final important matter that I need to emphasize is that due to our current covenants, the 10 million line of credit will max out our capability for further internal council borrowing. However, future town borrowing that could be supported by a town referendum, bond referendum, which is, utilizes a dedicated revenue source, would still be possible and an option. Alternatively, the town could possibly request a reduction in its line of credit. So, that's a possibility I'm opening to the floor, that Dell may want to address tonight, is the fact that if there's a special need that you may have, and you'd like to be able to finance this internally, we can always go back to TD Bank later and reduce the line...
Who's got the gong?
Whether it be 2 million or 3 million.
I need a gong thing.
Okay. Thank you all, and I'd like to turn the podium back to the Mayor and the rest of the Council for a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. You got to make it shorter next time. That's way too long. Anyhow, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor.
Does your friend from TD Bank need to make any comments? Marty?
Dell, you may just want to wave.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any public comment on this matter?
Just Mayor, before, before there's any public comment, I just want to take a moment and thank Marty for his hard work on this. As long as you think the presentation was, he had, he's had just unbelievable amount of hours in this, in researching this, and working with multiple, multiple funding sources. So, I just want to thank him for his efforts on this. And Dell, thank you for being here tonight as well.
Yes, I also, I forgot to mention, Keith, you make sure you pass the word, big thanks to Carol Calici, who is our formal legal counsel on this. And it's a commitment from her prior to her formal retirement date at the end of May. So, thank you, Carol.
Get out. Public comments closed. Nobody had any comments? Hold on, we do have some public comments.
John Eastman, 188th Avenue. Thinking back to Wilma, I think the total bill was $10 million. So, that's what a cat three storm will do to us. Now, we have had a lot of vegetation removal in this last storm. So, you know, if we get whacked in the next year or two, hopefully there won't be as much. But I think that this is great work, and we need this. But we need to also work on our strategy for this, this bulk removal, because the current process is not economical. It costs too much money, and I think there's better ways we can do it. And possibly taking one of our unused parks and opening it up to waste and let residents bring the stuff in, rather than go to each swale and remove it, might be an option. It could save us a bundle, because then we can separate the stuff out and save a lot of money getting rid of it. Because doing it on a panic basis, like, you know, every time a storm comes, people want it out of their yard, like today, and costing $10 million to do our town, if we get hit two or three times with an active season, I mean, we can burn through this $10 million and be on the hook for another $10 million. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Bob Hartman, 5441, 198th Terrace. There's only one piece in here that concerns me. It's my understanding, based on what Marty said, that we are fully leveraged now. This $10 million line of credit, which I agree we need it, but it sounds like we can't borrow anything else if we had some sort of a catastrophe here in this building unrelated to a storm. I don't know if we can use a piece of the 10 million, or if we had to go out to the bank for money to repair this place, or any of the town's assets. Does what Marty said mean we can't borrow any more money? So, I'm not clear on that.
All right. Go ahead, Marty. Go ahead.
Well, that's a good point. But the, the town building and property just went through a, an extensive property and insurance analysis. So, anything other than disaster is fully insured. So, you could be rest assured. But thank you, Bob.
Okay. No additional public comment? Public comment is closed. Back to us. Any questions, or we're good?
No, I think we're good. I think, you know, just to Bob, to your point, as, as Marty said, that we could investigate the option of lowering that limit a little bit and provide some options there. There are also, you know, things in the works where we've leveraged for other pieces of property that hopefully will, will also be freeing up some. So, I think, I, you know, I think we still have options. You know, technically, we're at the limit, but I think there's still a lot of options still available to us. Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to jump in here real quick. Great presentation, Marty. You obviously put a lot of time in this, and we do appreciate that. We really do. Okay, so I just want to mention that right off the bat.
Yeah, and I would be remiss if I didn't say that as well. I know Marty's, like he said, he's been working on this for a year. He's been coming to me every once in a while with the latest numbers. And, and the, and the great thing is, you know, interest rates are creeping up, but every time he came to me, the numbers were lower and lower. So, I know he was working very hard to make that happen. So, thank you, Marty.
Yeah, stupendous job, Marty. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Call the question.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Pleasure. Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Next.
Item 14 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, enacting a zoning in progress for wireless service facilities and personal wireless service facilities as defined in Section 365.172 Florida Statute and 47 United States Code, subsection 332, subsection C7C2. Adding into the zoning in progress, the installation of fiber for backhaul within the town's rights of way, directing town staff to defer the acceptance and processing of development applications, and prohibiting the issuance of building permits, development orders, or local business tax receipts until the earlier of the date the town adopts its code revisions, or December 31st, 2018, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Mayor and Council, as a result of your adoption of the first reading of the telecom ordinance, Council Gary Resnick believes that it would be very prudent to immediately file a zoning in progress, so that there's not a slew of applications between first and second reading. As a result, it's here for your consideration.
All right, do we have a motion in a second?
Yeah, I made one. I made a motion.
All right. Any public comment on this matter? Seen no public comment. Public comment is closed. Call the question.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passed.
So, we have one more thing?
Yeah, we do. I'm waiting for them to acknowledge.
Are you ready for the final?
Are you ready for the final item, Mayor?
Yes.
We have a discussion item, Mayor. It's the amendment to the ground lease with Helen Holmes of Weston Development LLC.
Okay.
Do you want to introduce the item?
Yeah, I mean, the individual from Helen Holmes is here, can introduce himself. After the Town Council approved its lease terms, they came back with certain modifications. We came back with some further modifications. None of them are really substantive, just more procedural on how they're going to be bringing the fill to the property, that they're going to have an equipment there at the time when the fill is being moved around the property. They're not going to be storing vehicles or equipment there when the fill is finally placed in its location. Other than that, there were, yeah, no, but that's, other than that, that was, we just modified another, one other thing, and that was in regards to the term. The term in the lease will start when they actually get access to the property, not...
So the clock doesn't start ticking till they take possession?
Exactly. There's so much permitting that has to go on that we didn't believe that it was fair to start the clock before they were actually on there. So, and there was one other thing, let me just see. No, that was it, Mayor.
So what do we need, a motion to approve with changes?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter? Seen no public comment. Public comment is closed. Call the question.
Well, would the individual from Helen Holmes like to introduce yourself?
Go ahead. Mayor, my name's Armando Ruby. I work for Helen Holmes of Weston Development, and we're happy to do this joint venture with you guys and become good neighbors. We're right down the street for...
A stone's throw, literally.
Correct. Dalton City Living Facility, and it's only about two or three blocks away.
Well, welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
If we can, go ahead. So you're comfortable that this project and the portion of moving the fill in and moving the fill out will be accomplished within 12 months?
Yes. The concept of the agreement is we're donating up to 600...
Yeah, no, I know, I've read the agreement. I'm very familiar with the agreement. I just want to hear it from you that, that probably one of our single biggest fears is that this is going to sit there longer than what...
No, we're actually, again, part of the lease is because we're taking some of it back.
Correct.
1,200 versus 600.
I just want to hear from you that what the timeframe is for that, that you feel that will be.
Yeah, within...
Council, let me, let me address that. I don't think the question's being understood. The lease is clear that they're given 12 months lease from the time they take possession of the property. There is a possibility for a month-to-month extension that they're...
That's why I'm asking, that's exactly why I'm asking the question.
But that's going to be at your discretion. So if you don't want them on that property, there is abandonment language in there, et cetera, and they would lose out greatly. So the question that's being asked specifically is, do you believe that this will be 12 months and that will be it?
We feel comfortable that it is because it's part of our schedule to bring back that fill. So yes, we're comfortable with the 12 months.
Perfect. I just wanted to hear it from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was leading into...
It's all right. Any other questions? We're good? All right, call it.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have one final item, which is the minutes of March 8th, 2018. Mayor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comments on our minutes? They've been corrected before. Seen no public comment? Public comment is closed. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion adjourned.